Tail of other vehicles into that intersection is just too close.
It's gonna happen.
Because of the left turn restrictions, if enforced, they will not be able to make that left turn.
Who's gonna enforce them is what I'm saying. Let's be realistic. If you put that driveway on the north side of Ramona, if you put that driveway, that's gonna avoid that problem there. And that's the only way I can see voting on this like that.
So with the current park and ride, it has two driveways, one on both sides. Is that something that's a problem that you see cars cutting through? Like, I guess I don't know how they, maybe hypothetical, I don't know. I know that there's currently two driveways at the park and ride, so if we don't see it as a problem now, would it be a problem with homes there? Is it maybe less, I guess you'll have children or whatever there with homes? I guess I don't understand why they decided. Like, what makes it unsafe to put a second driveway?
It's just that. It's because of that cut through. And now you have to consider that these are residential homes. This is gonna be a community, and typical of communities, too. And you'll see some communities have just one driveway, and it's also a safety issue. I mean, having more vehicles going in and out into that area because of the community, you know, it might be, it could be a safety issue for the community as well. Not only just the circulation aspect, but also just more people going in and out.
I mean, realistically speaking, the circulation of what being proposed here, it's creating a chaos for people coming out and only making the right turn when you're exiting the premises. You can't go westbound, you can't go eastbound, no matter what. You have to go westbound. Having that driveway on the north side would alleviate that. You wouldn't have that circulation problem. They would come out on the north side and head east. Make it easy for them. I don't know. I just feel Mr. Hernandez could come up here and address that for us. What would be so hard about eliminating one of the houses on the north side and putting that driveway that's already there? Leaving it there.
Are you inviting Mr. Hernandez to come and speak?
If he has anything to say, because I mean...
Need to reopen the public hearing.
Reopening public hearing.
Could you speak into the mic?
There we go. Chair, member of the Planning Commission, there were numerous site plans that we did initially, and there was various, actually, we started off, I think, with about 27 or 28 units and a variety of different site plans. So we worked with staff and traffic engineers, city engineers, and they all gave us input, the fire department. We worked with all the various departments looking at those site plans, and they were modified, moved, we moved plans around. There were numerous meetings with the city's technical staff, and they finally reviewed all of them. And it actually was from staff that one of the many site plans we had, there was a north entrance on the north side. It was staff who said, "No," because that paperwork is gonna cut through your property, it's gonna be unsafe for the residents. So we said, "Fine, we'll eliminate that." And we modified it and designed it, all working with city's engineers, their traffic engineers. And currently, right now, you're saying, coming out of that parking lot, you can't go left. Right now, there's a sign that says, "No," and then out there, you can't take a left. And then on the median out in the right away, there's also a sign, I think, that says, "No left turn." And they purposely extended that median to try to prevent those kind of turns. We looked at it. We, as developers, said, "Well, hey, we could go left in there." And traffic, again, looked at that and said, "No, the queuing, the stacking, the safety." And I think there's a moratorium on that island. Those islands were built to prohibit a left turn. So we was like, "Okay, that's not permitted, then it's not permitted." So we did look at a variety of different site plans, worked with staff, fire department, all the technical staff, and this is what we came up with at the end.
Would you...
Alex Hernandez. I'm president of Brandywine Homes, and I'm the applicant.
Mr. Hernandez, question for you is, would you purchase a property here, knowing the situation that's at hand already, the concerns that we have?
Yeah, we've...
Would you be okay with that?
We've done quite a bit of extensive marketing, looking at communities, and we build a lot of communities in these type of situations where you're next to transit, you're on boulevards, it's infill housing, that's all we do. And we can show you numerous examples of where we do these communities. And people, quite frankly, like them. They're near their home, they're in their hometown, they're near their jobs. We've designed them where everybody has a two-car garage. We're exceeding the city's code, the parking. We had more units in there, that was another option, but the city asked us to restore the red car building. So that was something we are undertaking. We're restoring that building. That's not something we normally do. We're retrofitting that building and put all new windows, electrical, plumbing, everything to fix that building up, and have it now as an asset to the city. And we're home builders, that's not normally what we do. But we were working with staff and the input, and that's what we did. And we think we've also had our bank, you know, look at this property. They've done appraisals, and they all feel...
Can we extend his time?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, anyway, we have had marketing studies done, and definitely there's a high demand for the price point of these homes. There's not new, there's no new townhomes anywhere in this area. There's been a few projects you've had that were single-family homes, and they've done quite well. Those will be a lot more expensive than what we're gonna do. We're gonna provide something more entry-level to the homeowner, and it's an opportunity for people to buy their first home. And we think it's a great community to do it. Baldwin Park's a great community. We've designed it so there's gonna be, it's a community. In addition to, for safety purposes, we're putting pilasters and wrought iron around the entire, even though we can't gate the entire community, all that's gonna be gated around, with the exception of the entry, so that there is safety. There's a park that we're creating inside the community, so that their kids can go out and have, kick the ball, have a picnic in the area. So we're looking for the livability of that community, and we've put those amenities into our plan. So if you take a little closer look, we have a trellis, picnic table, barbecues. You know, we're providing that stuff because we know people are gonna live here.
What type of business are you proposing in the commercial area?
We have no tenant at this point. Our intent is to retrofit it. We're designing that right now to retrofit it.
What do you foresee, foresee going in there?
It's not gonna, it's not that big. It's only 1,000 square feet. So, you know, we're gonna stub in the sewer water and everything else. It's not gonna be a big impacting business. It's only 1,000 square feet. That's one thing to consider. Yeah, we have six spaces, but it's only 1,000 square feet. When you put in the countertop, et cetera, you're not gonna have much space left, really.
Would you agree to say that any type of business going in there that becomes an issue with parking will eventually become an issue for their tenants?
Oh, yeah. We are the homeowners association, so we're definitely looking out for those tenants. And we're working with the staff and the CCNRs, and the city attorney will review those CCNRs, to make sure that the two uses can work compatibility with regards to parking. You know, you don't want commercial people parking in the residential parking. So we'll be working with staff on designing a way to police that and ensure that they're separated.
Chair, I can tell you, and Director Romo can also verify, staff, Director Romo and Associate Planner Teas have been actually working with a pretty couple of, we can't really tell you who, but we are actively working on getting that building filled with a really, some really cool uses. Uses. Maybe one, you know. We're looking at more than one, but we are working on it. We don't anticipate it staying vacant.
I just wouldn't want to see that it becomes an issue for our actual tenant to say that their parking is being invaded by the commercial building that's gonna be existing there.
And that would be something that I'm sure Alex can, you know, that's gonna be something that would be addressed in the lease, that Alex and his firm would directly communicate with whoever goes into that building.
Because it's all one, there'll be a homeowners association, and then we're gonna put rules and regulations that govern that property. So whoever would use that property or buy that property, they're gonna know the rules up front. They cannot go into the residential areas. There're gonna be certain rules set up, you know, hours of operation, all those type of things. We'll be putting those regulations in there. And that's all subject to staff's review, the city attorney's review, and those actually get recorded against the property.
Okay. Thank you very help. My heart is set that, you know, that driveway on the north side is crucial, and that's how you'll get my vote, with that driveway on the north side. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. Hernandez, just for the record, the Brandywine and the city did enter into a DDA, a development disposition agreement.
Correct.
That's correct?
That's correct.
That's, just for the record, that's correct.
Yeah, there was a measure of an ENA, but that moved on to a development.
Right, that was superseded by that. That does not bind this body, but just for the record, you should know there is that agreement.
Thank you.
Mr. Tuttel? Yes? I gave Amy about 25 pages of signatures of the residents in the whole area that they didn't do a study on to protest this whole development. Just touching out, I forgot to say that at my speech.
And we do have it, and it will be placed in the case file. It's part of the public record.
All right. Does anybody else wish to speak?
John Rios, resident. Seems like the planning commission is going about things the opposite way, you know. We should have done the studies before. The traffic studies should have been presented ahead of time, not wait until you guys decide. Our engineering department, from my point of view, is useless. You know, if they got okay to get into Badillo the driveway and not on Ramona, another driveway, like Mario said, you know, that's very crucial. The traffic in Ramona or Badillo is, especially with a train in the mornings or late in the afternoons, you're gonna get people all the way through, you know. And the people are not gonna go all the way to Puente to make a U-turn. They're gonna go down Ramona and then through those businesses, this shortcut and everything. And you guys are stating that you have two-car garage and one extra for the four bedrooms. Common sense tell you that everybody, especially with a four-bedroom, they have kids that are already driving after 16 years old. They probably have four or five cars. That's, you know, where are they all gonna park? On Ramona? You guys have to, common sense, use common sense. Just don't jump into some, just because the city council wants it, you know, or somebody in the city council's gonna get paid off like they usually do, you know. I'm gonna be very blunt, you know. I usually don't come to these meetings unless I see that you guys are doing something wrong, and you guys are doing wrong. Just don't jump into it, study it before you guys voting on it. Thank you.
Honorable chair members of the commission, just for informational purposes, want to let you know what you have to talk about is the kind of track map that you're looking at specifically. The actual design of the homes already went through design review and received approval. So your focus tonight is on the subdivision, and whether that subdivision complies with the city's subdivision ordinance, as well as the subdivision map act. And based on staff's findings and recommendation, it does comply with that ordinance. The other thing to point out, I was looking at the petition that Mr. Tuttel had brought up. I do see that it identifies Main and Pacific as the actual petition. And then on top, it was handwritten, Ramona and Badillo. But I think the purpose of this petition was for Main and Pacific. So just for the record.
If you look at the addresses where the signatures are at, they're around Ramona. We have them in both areas. You can look at the addresses of the people.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tuttel.
Chair Rooney.
Anyone else wishes to speak? Hearing none. We'll close public hearing.
I have a question to staff. Is the planning commission is the one that is allowed to review the ordinance and make changes to it, or do we have to submit it to our council members?
Are you speaking about this item?
Yes.
Yes, it's up to the planning commission to decide yes or no.
So we can make determination whether...
Yes. With the aside that if you vote no, it'll probably be an appeal to the city council, and it'd be in their hands, if you vote no.
Okay.
Chair Rooney.
All right. Any more questions?
Yes.
You know, when I take a closer look at this project, you know, I came away really intrigued. This is like the gateway. You know, I realized that this is like entering the downtown area. And it's really gonna bring up, bring up the city. I was kind of taken aback by the fact that the possibilities of that commercial, that the fact that it's gonna stay, it's gonna be refurbished, remodeled, people coming in are gonna see that, and they're gonna be like, you know, really kind of set their eyes on, wow, you know, what's, you know, like you were talking about, I'm really, staff, I have full confidence in the staff and the options for that commercial part of it. And like I said, I love the direction that the city is going, and trying to make downtown really, you know, with all the different connections and different walkways, and make it all kind of come together. You know, and also the fact that the fire department, the engineering department, the transportation department, they've all kind of coalesced and said that, you know, this, there's no issues. I guess my thoughts really focus on people coming into the city, that's the beginning of downtown. And I think it's gonna be something really to beautify the city of Baldwin Park. I'm really, I was kind of taken aback and really had to do a double take with the possibilities of, like the gentleman said, they weren't, that commercial part of it, they had no, that was not their responsibility, but they decided to keep it. And I just think that's pretty exciting to see what could go in there, in addition to those residences. As far as the concerns about the parking, you know, I'm not, I'm not one to really stay in congestion and just wait. You know, to get there, I would go around Puente, maybe through the back. I don't know. I just feel like there's a lot of focus on congestion in that area. Well, when there's congestion on my street on Merced, you know, I might go down Fraser. I might go down, you know, Main. I might go, you know, I'll find a way, maybe the street over didn't come around. You know, I'm not just gonna stay there, you know, and just kind of, I don't know, wait in traffic. Yeah, so I spent today driving around that spot, and I came away impressed. I came away, there's, the possibilities are really exciting, and I think it's gonna be something positive for the city of Baldwin Park.
I would agree with you, Borques, on that matter, as far as beautifying our city. It is. It is gonna beautify the city. All the other projects that we've actually voted on have actually beautified our city, and it's something that I stand proud to say, hey, everything that we're doing now is for a good cause and actually represents what we want in our city. You know, the LA Fitness, hey, I'm proud of that. It was perfect for our community. But the concerns that are brought up for this particular project, I don't think are being addressed in a formal manner, to see it in the future-wise. So as far as for me, I don't want my name on this. It's my thing. I don't want it written on it. Because the day tomorrow, people are gonna come back and say, "Well, wait a minute. What were you thinking when that project was presented to you? Why didn't you speak up? Why didn't you do anything about it? Why didn't you say something?" Knowing that it's there. It's obvious. The problem and the issue is gonna be there. It's gonna be there. Yes, the reported traffic mitigation report was done in 2014. That's three years later, and we're still using that as our basis to know if there's gonna be any impact on traffic. I don't know. That's just my two cents.
And, you know, I totally, I totally see Vice Chair Maciel's concerns. But I think that these concerns come up a lot when we talk about, you know, the project on Merced and Baldwin Park Boulevard, or LA Fitness, or, you know, Walmart, or some of these other, you know, it's a continuous thing. But now, in hindsight, I don't see people complaining. When those projects are being done, there's a lot of, you know, voices reaching out and talking. But when I think back, you know, on these projects that have beautified Baldwin Park, and I love the direction that this city is going, you know, people are talking. People are seeing this city grow and diversify, and it's just a lovely thing to watch. But, you know, some of these concerns, and I do agree, you know, I've taken a closer look at the vice chair's concerns, you know, they've happened in the past. People have talked about that. Traffic's, as well as it should be. Traffic should be a big-time concern for residents and for those main thoroughfares. But I think the positives outweigh the negatives, being that this is the gateway. That's the word, the beginning of Baldwin Park, the entrance into downtown. And we need something like to stand out. And that's why, you know, I, just from a neutral, you know, look at it, that's the way I see it.
All right. Any other chairman wanna speak? Planning commissioners, I mean. All right. Seeing as there's no more questions, is there a motion to pass?
Yeah, I move to approve.
I'm gonna second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Oh, roll call? All right. Playing Commissioner Edith?
We need a roll call?
I got it. Commissioner Borques?
Yes.
Commissioner Flores?
Yes.
Commissioner Sains?
Yes.
Commissioner Maciel?
No.
Chair Rooney?
No.
Passes three to two.
Three to two.
Motion passes. Three to two. Is there another issue on the board? Yes? One more item?
Yes. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair Commissioners, members of the audience. I'm gonna give you a little bit of history. In 2002, the city completed a comprehensive general plan update. At the time, the required seven elements were updated, including housing, land use, circulation, open space, conservation, noise, and public safety. Additionally, three optional elements were included, and those were economic development or quality in urban design. Typically, after you do a comprehensive general plan update, you begin a comprehensive update in your zoning code in order to achieve consistency between the two documents as required by state law. The zoning code comprehensive update was finally approved by the city council and became effective in 2012. Recently, when we contracted with MIG to review our zoning map for consistency as a typical cleanup effort, they noticed that some of our properties within existing and approved and adopted specific plan areas didn't have consistency between their zoning designation and their general plan land use designation. And what we mean by that is similar to what we have here on the table. If you have a consistent zoning classification, general plan use, you would see something like this. Your zoning classification would be R1, your general plan land use designation would be single-family residential. If you're not consistent, it could be where your zoning designation would, let's say, be RG, which is our lower-density multifamily residential, and your general plan land use designation on the same property would be general commercial. That's what it would mean to be inconsistent. So since we did a comprehensive code update in 2012, and since that time, the city's approved, and some of you have been on planning commissions at that time, four specific plans. SP 1301, which is the Rome project behind City Hall, which was completed in 2016. SP 1401, which is the Indigo Single Family Residential Detached Project, which is almost done at Baldwin Park and Merced Avenue. SP 1501, which is the downtown transit-oriented specific plan. And then SP 1601, which is Pacific Via, which is currently under construction on Pacific Avenue, and that's the small-lot, single-family, which is just this side of the 7-Eleven. So as a result of state law, we need to make everything consistent. And as MIG reviewed our zoning map, we found that there's approximately 100 parcels that need some type of change, which should either be a zone change to be consistent with the general plan land use designation and the specific plan, or a general plan land use designation change to be consistent with the zoning and the specific plan, or both. So at this point, what we really want to make sure that you keep in mind is that all of these changes that we've indicated in the staff report, they're not new actions. These are changes that are cleanup, map edits to properties with previously approved specific plans for which review and approval was already completed, and which are largely either under construction or already constructed. So at this point, staff is recommending that the planning commission open the public hearing, receive any public comments, and following the public hearing, adopt resolution PC 16-06, I'm sorry, 18-06, entitled, "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baldwin Park, recommending the city council adopt the findings of fact and approve ordinance 1409 and resolution 2018-230, which are cleanup consistency edits to the zoning and general plan designations on properties within specific plans that have been previously been approved by the city council." The locations are SP 1301, SP 1401, SP 1501, and SP 1601. The applicant is the City of Baldwin Park, and the case numbers are AGP 119 and Z 556. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Just as a legal suggestion here, is that with all of these cleanups, it's not gonna propose a new project. In other words, there's no project hidden in this project, in what we're doing today. All we're doing is, we're doing vertical consistency
Yes.
between the general plan and the specific plans and the zoning. The zoning has to comply with the general plan, and the general plan has to comply with the zoning. So when you do large projects like the specific plans, little parcels here and there get caught out of phase. So that's what you're doing today. You're just cleaning it up. You're not approving a project. No project hidden here. That concludes my remarks.
All right. We will now open it up to public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak has three minutes. Seeing none, public hearing closed. You gotta go up there if you wanna speak. He has to go up there if he wants to speak. All right. Any questions from commissioners? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
A motion to approve it.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion is approved. Fight is there? All right. Seeing as there... Is there one more?
Chair, just, you know, I provided you with the planning division's monthly report for December of 2017 and January 2018. If you had any questions about those, I'd be more than happy to entertain them. If not, I'll move on to the next item, which is the verbal update on the proposed Irwindale Materials Recovery Facility and Transfer Station. It is still slowly working its way through the legal process. It's my understanding, we are still waiting on a response to our offer from the city of Irwindale, and we have not heard anything yet on that. So that's all I have on that. On another note, I'd like to introduce, sorry, I'm gonna put him on the spot, our new planning technician, Jonathan Marin. He just started on Monday. He's a Cal Poly grad, and so we will, we've already got him to work.
Welcome aboard, Jonathan.
Yeah.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks for all your work. Hard work.
And that's all I have, Chair.
All right. Are there any other issues that need to be addressed?
The one issue that I have is back to the ordinance that we have in place already for parking spaces. Can we look at that? Can we look at that? And I think it needs to be updated, honestly. I hate to have this issue again come up again.
We could do a study session. Is that what you're?
Yes, we need to do something because the population of Baldwin Park has increased and let's be realistic, we're going by what's been written back in the past, which, you know, I really had a hard time with this particular project this time. Nothing bad about the project. Project is good, but it's just, deep in my heart, I know we're going to have issues and we need to avoid those issues. If we see them now, let's avoid them and do something about it now so we can correct this and that future developers see what our issues are and concerns are and they have to bid to what's been written there.
And just to clarify, this would be like our current parking ordinance in the code or the parking in the specific plan? Because there's two different standards.
Okay, I only reviewed one of them.
Yeah, the parking in the specific plan is different than what's in our code. Our code applies to everything that doesn't have its own parking standard, like what's in the specific plan. So like if you were to build on a residential property, you would use the code. If you're building in the specific plan area downtown, we use the parking standard that's in the downtown.
Okay.
I just need clarification on which one or both.
I would like clarification on how we can change the parking ordinance for housing, for like condominiums, because it's still stinging me with the Pacific Plan where they had 15, they had 15 parking spots for 48 three and four-bedroom units and we asked them to expand it and all they did was make the 15 parking spots smaller to create 19 parking spots. And that's ridiculous and that's, I mean, it's still stinging me because being a resident over here, I know my neighbors, they have, you know, seven to eight cars on each side of my houses and I have two houses of Baldwin Park and both of them have a lot of cars. So, you know, it's going to be an issue. You're going to have these people that move into a four-bedroom house and it's, you know, a guy and his wife, they have two cars and their cousin Chato with his wife and, you know what I mean? It's going to have four cars with two parking spots there and that's why, even though it is with the code, I couldn't vote my conscience, I had to vote my conscience on this one. It just bugs me because the city of Baldwin Park, the residents are screaming. When they find out I'm on the planning commission, all I hear is about parking and traffic and how bad it is.
And Chair, one thing that I will bring up to the developer brandy wine, on the HOAs, they could always limit the number of cars per tenant or per resident, because I agree with you, sometimes you got families that'll bring in, you know, their classic cars, their regular cars, and all of a sudden, you got one unit with like five or six cars. But the HOA could address that.
Also, earlier, before the meeting started, we were talking about including something in the CCRN. Are we like past that? Should we have talked about that before voting?
I know what you're referring to. Yes, we can put it in, we need not open up the hearing again. So could you explain for the record?
It was to require them to utilize their garage for parking, not for storage.
Yeah, and we've done that.
Right. We can do that, Amy Campbell.
Yeah, we have actually done that in the past because I know parking's a big issue and I know especially with the larger projects like the one on Baldwin Park and Merced and the one on Pacific, those CCNRs have that in there. That your garage shall be used for parking of two vehicles, not for storage of stuff. So, and the HOA would enforce that.
I have another comment, since Mr. Maciel mentioned LA Fitness, I think there's a little bit of traffic congestion there on that street, on Garvey. I'm seeing that when, because I go to LA Fitness and when I'm leaving the premise, to make a left, there's, and this is during peak hours, I've only been there during peak hours, so I was thinking maybe we can suggest to put a street signal on the, instead of the four stops at the exit and entrance of the freeway, the 10 freeway?
It's by Foster Schools Corner right there, where the apartments of Foster School is, there's entrance to the Francis Skido.
There's the entrance at Vineland right there? Is that the one you're talking about? Instead of a stop sign, put a stop light?
Yeah.
The on and off ramp and then where Vineland comes down?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll bring that up to Public Works.
Yeah, because I'm seeing that there's already a long line to get into the freeway, but since the stop sign, that's why it creates that long line of traffic. And when you're exiting, I notice when I exit out, I notice that other cars like cutting through, so there's like two cars in one lane, so I think that would be.
I would just like to comment on that. My kids used to go to Foster School and it's a dead end, so the traffic is really congested on Foster School. So all those people are parents coming from the school to go on to the freeway. So even with the light, I believe you're going to have a lot of congestion because I've seen that since my 28-year-old was going to Foster School.
Yeah, there needs to be maybe some kind of synchronization study on the lights.
A light might be helpful to it.
Before, there wasn't a stop sign when they exit the freeway, which I think it was, that was a safety hazard actually. And it's good that they added the stop sign, but now I think with the flood, traffic going into LA Fitness and the restaurants now, I think it might need a street light, I mean the signal.
I totally blanked out and got into other subjects. How and who can change the parking ordinance with the townhouses and the residents for the parking?
Project that we just heard?
Well, no, I'm saying in general, future codes.
In general.
Because we can't do nothing about it now.
Right. In general, what happens is, is that any amendment to the zoning code, it comes to you as the planning commission first. And then you, as the planning commission, will make a recommendation to the city council. The city council then holds their public hearing and then they are the final authority on any changes to the code. You, as the planning commission, have first crack at making recommendations on the zoning portion of the municipal code.
So how do we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We would need to have like a study session committee and proposal to ourselves.
We would actually do that as staff, yes. If you so direct us.
Can I get a motion to do that?
Just a consensus.
A consensus?
Three commissioners at least.
Yeah, me, well, I know me and Mr. Mario over there. Is there a third commission? Yes? All right.
If you can just give us, you know, because you're.
Give you time.
Yeah, please just give us a little, be a little patient with us. We'll be more than happy to put that together for you. Keep in mind that, you know, it's just Abraham and I full-time in addition to doing, you know, what we're doing here, plus all the cannabis stuff and, you know, all the other projects and things like that. So I just appreciate your patience, but we will do that, yeah.
You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Believe me.
I see how hard you worked up come to the second floor in the middle of the day. All right, so are there any more issues? Seeing none, we are adjourned.
A motion to adjourn.
I second.
Motion to adjourn. All right, all those in favor say aye. Oppose? We're adjourned.
Aye.
Okay, good night.
What? I didn't go to my other slides because I realized. Yeah, sure, here, come here. You know what, you know I got for you.
I was drinking my water in front of him, he got thirsty.
Oh, ask me, don't be afraid to ask. Come on, you know that. You got it. No.
Help them and then at least we can tell them.
That's what you need to do first.
Got it, first go there and then you'll lead them to the right direction.
And then we can tell them, yeah, based on the address. We.
I'll see you soon.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we'll see you on the next one.
Yep.
Over here, we'll take them up in the morning.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, always a pleasure. Sure.
No, but I'll take it if you don't want.
Thank you.
It's in the quotes and everything, but my conscience, but also.
I understand.
Not only Foster, I live across the street from Geddes now. Mornings, I got to take my son to school at 11:15 because if I wait till 7:30 to take him, I can't get out.
Can't get out, yeah, I believe it. All right, well, have a good night, Kevin. Thank you.
All right, you too. You could go home and pass out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where are we going? I have to. I don't need a drink. 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 Not only Foster, I live across the street from Geddes now. Mornings, I got to take my son to school at 1:15 because if I wait till 7:30 to take him, I can't get out. Can't get out, yeah, I believe it. All right, well, have a good night, Kevin. Thank you.
All right, you too. You could go home and pass out.
Yeah. I don't want to be, you know, a council member being a A-10 candidate. Look what you did. Don't get me wrong, like you said. Yeah. What? I didn't go to my other slides because I realized. Yes. Yeah, sure, here, come here. You know what, you know I got for you.
I was drinking my water in front of him, he got thirsty.
Oh, ask me, don't be afraid to ask. Come on, you know that. You got it. No. I think this guy assigned 20,000. 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 I think this guy assigned 20,000.